... everybody, we're just a couple of minutes early, but I think we'll go ahead and get started. It's, uh, we're honored tonight to have, uh, Cub Pack 492 here to present the colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Co- guard, and will the audience please rise? Co- guard attention? Co- guard advance? Post colors? Co- guard salute? Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two? Co- guard retreat. Audience at ease. Ice cream?
Thank you very much, guys, that's great. Why don't, uh, why don't we have you guys come up front here, uh, with your leaders and stand right here, we'll get the council in the background and get a picture of everybody. So your family can take pictures.
Dave, don't you have a camera?
No, I don't, dad. You technology.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I do have one scout who has a question for you. Have your question or is this your question? This isn't your question, do you remember your question? You do? Okay, this is our Weeblo scout Ivan, um, he's been in scouts for, this is your third year, I think, right?
No, second.
This is your second year? And, uh, what grade are you in?
Uh, fourth.
Fourth grade, so Cub Scouts overall is for boys in grades first through fifth, through fifth grade, and this is Ivan's first year in, uh, as a Weeblos, um, which is the, um, rank where they prepare to do th- all the things that Boy Scouts do, so they learn how to build a fire, um, they get, uh, we got your Woodlandship last year, but they pitch a tent without an adult's help, um, and they go camping with their leaders, with their, sometimes without their parents, um, so all the cool stuff, getting ready to do, cool stuff Boy Scouts, are you ready to answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, good, go ahead, just kinda step forward a little bit. Here, go ahead and ask the mayor.
How did you become mayor?
How did I become mayor? Well, a bunch of people who are just a little bit older than you voted and allowed me the opportunity to be the mayor.
Alright, hey, thanks a lot, guys, we appreciate it.
Mark, thank you, and you guys, thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it. Okay, Jason, we'll go on to the roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation, Renton Heart Month. Whereas heart disease continues to be the leading cause of death in the United States and affects men and women of every age and race, and whereas many people who have high blood pressure may go years without knowing it, which is why heart disease is called America's silent killer, and whereas the chance of developing coronary heart disease can be reduced by taking simple steps to prevent and control certain factors that put people at greater risk, whereas the Renton Fire and Emergency Services Department supports its commitment to fighting heart disease by promoting preventative screenings and public education in many of the city's diverse communities throughout Renton, and whereas Renton Heart Month serves to increase public awareness of the importance of fighting cardiovascular disease by developing good eating habits, being physically active, and taking advantage of preventative screenings, and whereas being aware of the warning signs of heart attack or stroke and knowing what to do may help save a life, all Renton citizens are encouraged to learn how to perform cardio-pulmonary resuscitation, CPR, and use an automatic external defibrillator, AED. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 2015 to be Renton Heart Month, and I encourage all citizens to increase their awareness of cardiovascular disease detection and prevention by participating in this important community risk reduction campaign, and witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 26th day of January 2015, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the proclamation being adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This has been a wonderful program that, uh, the Fire Department's been providing every year. It's my pleasure to present this to Deputy Fire Chief Eric Walgren.
Mayor Law and City Council members, my name's Eric Walgren and I'm proud to be your Deputy Fire Chief. Thank you again for helping us bring attention to cardiovascular disease and diabetes with this, with tonight's proclamation. This is the 10th year that we've been promoting Renton Heart Month, with the goal of bringing awareness and education to these two serious health concerns. In the first nine years, Renton Fire Department performed over 50,000 screenings during the month of February. Of those 7,000 customers, we found to have high blood pressure or elevated dangerous blood sugar levels. People who were at risk were encouraged to see their doctor in order to address the risk and help prevent future medical complications. We can't do this alone, so Renton Fire is partnering with Valley Medical Center, the Renton School District, the Renton Community Foundation, and Community Services to provide free preventative screenings to the public for blood pressure and blood sugar readings. Renton Fire and Emergency Service Medical Technicians will be performing these screenings at schools, businesses, and community groups throughout the Renton area. The community is also welcome to come to any of our fire stations and receive these screenings as theirs as well, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple of items, you received the administrative report in your packet, so I'll, I'll summarize, I think for the audience, we want to just make sure everyone is aware that, um, uh, last week, the intersection improvements, uh, related to the Southport Development and along Lake Washington Boulevard commenced. Uh, the bulk of those, uh, the activity related to that construction will happen Monday through Friday from, uh, 8:00 to 5:00 PM. No work is anticipated on Saturdays, and it's not allowed on Sundays, um, but people can, uh, should be aware that there may be times when, uh, traffic coming in, uh, onto and, and leaving that site may slow down, um, uh, regular traffic, so just be aware of that. That is both for the intersection there, as well as, um, uh, construction activity that's gonna begin and is beginning on the Southport Hotel. And so those two projects, both enter and exit right there, and so folks need to be aware of that. As part of our effort to encourage strong and healthy neighborhoods, we've announced again the, uh, communication grant process, this is a grant that's available to, in active neighborhoods, uh, there, um, is the opportunity for the city to assist in, in, uh, helping to fund newsletter costs and the publication of those. So if people are interested in that, they, they likely already received information from us through Norma McWhiller, who is our neighborhood coordinator, uh, they can also, um, contact us over the phone at 430-6603, uh, get online at our website, rentonwa.gov, and/or contact Norma, uh, over the, via web, uh, email. So we're, encourage, encourage folks to do that, and that's, uh, her address is on the website as well. And finally, uh, I'll just mention briefly and then leave it to Council President Ed Prince to say, uh, any further comments, but the, we were able to participate in, uh, an activity in last week in commemoration of Martin Luther King Day, uh, a discussion about inclusiveness in the City of Renton, and we, uh, had the opportunity, Council President Prince, myself, Police Chief Kevin Milosevic, and Deputy Administrator for Public Affairs Priti Shridhar participated along with other, uh, members of, of the community on a panel discussion that was, uh, hosted by the Living Hope Christian Fellowship. It was a nice activity and it's part of those, uh, the, our ongoing effort to, um, to work toward Renton being a more inclusive city for everyone, so it was, it was a great, uh, step in that direction, and we are looking forward to continuing that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, council member, or Council President Prince, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, I would just add that it was an amazing opportunity to go out and talk to different residents and hear their perspective on, um, diversity and inclusion and have an opening on this conversation, um, especially on Dr. King's birthday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is audience comment, we have one person signed up to address the council. Please come to the podium, give your name, city residents for the record, you have five minutes. Melody Kroeger.
My name is Melody Kroeger, K-R-O-E-G-E-R. I live in Renton, ahead of the curve, and the home of the NFC champions Seahawks. Last Friday morning, early in the morning, I, along with many other Renton residents and neighbors, participated in the One Night Count, sponsored by the King County Coalition on Homelessness. The Coalition's goal is to count men, women, and children who are homeless, without shelter, and staying outside, in doorways, under bridges, in cars, or other makeshift shelters during the night. The Coalition's goal is to increase awareness of homelessness, is to provide insight into the dynamics of causing homelessness, and is to inform strategies for hopefully solving it. This was my second year to participate, not only as a supporter, but as a volunteer counter. I was joined by Pastor Scott Kramer, Elena Goodman, she's the Site Director of Valley Cities, Beth Asher, Stuart Avery, several former Seattle U MBA students, and many, many others. Renton City Council members participated, including our new member Ruth Perez, thank you. And Mayor Dennis Law gave the opening remarks, reminding us of the task ahead of us. Police Chief Milosevic, along with police commanders and more than a handful of police officers, gave up their time to come and serve those among us who have the least. Renton City employees and department directors prepared a hot breakfast early, early in the morning, and they served all the volunteers as we turned, returned back in from our assigned counting areas. I know I'm forgetting somebody, I'm forgetting probably a lot of people, but I want you to know that everyone made counting the unsheltered their top priority. We came together in response to the growing crisis in homelessness. It's a hard thing, at least for me, to get out of a warm bed in the middle of the night, but it's harder still to look at someone who's shivering under a thin blanket on a cold car seat. You should be proud that we have a city full of volunteers willing to do just that, to look our harder edges right in the face and to imagine being able to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody, and I just want to add my thanks to all of the volunteers from our community who came out to do the count, it was a, a cold, wet evening, um, and I want to thank all the city employees, we had a lot of city employees that Melody mentioned a few of them, and Council Members Prince, Pavoni, and Perez, were all there, and, um, it was a great showing of people. It's a little disheartening, there's been a lot of effort over a number of years to try to address the homelessness issue, and King County has reported that, uh, the count this year shows an increase of 21% of, uh, people out on the street, and so it's a serious issue that continues to, uh, require a lot of strategy and, and, uh, public involvement, so, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, item number C.
Number C, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we adopt the consent agenda minus item C.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council approve the consent agenda minus item C, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Pavoni?
Uh, yes, item C is, um, basically housekeeping, it's a Scrivener's error, there's one word that needs to be changed, so I move that we take care of this by voting council concer tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Person, that council approve item C. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
No finished busi- no fi- unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Palmer?
Well, our agenda lists two transportation, um, reports, but we don't have them, so I guess I don't have any unfinished, we'll have to report out next week? Okay, I don't thi-
I don't have them either.
Yeah, they're both Rainier Flight, um, lease amendments.
Okay.
I don't think there's-
We'll figure that out.
It's okay, Greg, to, yeah, okay.
Okay.
We'll read it out next week.
Okay. And, Mr. Person?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Fin- Finance Committee has three reports.
Hey, Finance Committee, Committee Report, Site Lease Agreement for Wireless Communication Equipment at Rolling Hills Reservoir. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the 10-year site lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which will pay $2,500 in rent per month with a one-time inception fee of $7,500. There are two 10-year extension options, annual rent increases will be based on Consumer Price Index adjustments. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the Committee Report be approved as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next Finance Committee Report is regarding, uh, Verizon Wireless, uh, Communication Equipment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the five-year fourth addendum to LAG 97004, which is a lease, with Verizon Wireless to extend it for an additional five years and with an additional monthly rental fee of $200 for additional ground equipment at the northeast 12th Street Reservoir Site. This is signed by the committee chair and, uh, one member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last Committee Report is regarding a request for fee waiver for Rent and Housing Authority. The Finance Committee recommends approval of a 100% waiver of the development and mitigation fees as provided for in Rent Municipal Code 41210C for the Renton Housing Authorities for Sunset Area Transformation Plan Housing Projects with a total of 229 housing units. The fee waivers will be contingent upon the receipt of a HUD Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Implementation Grant and will expire on December 31st, 2020 unless otherwise extended by the council. This is signed by the committee chair and one member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Uh, this is a continuation of our Highlands and Sunset Area rehabilitation, and there's quite a bit of discussion previously when we passed an ordinance, council did pass an ordinance authorizing this we- favor, fee waiver, I'm having trouble tonight, too, anyway, uh, and, but the reason for this tonight is that the city and the county and several other agencies are putting in for a $30 million grant to get this project underway, and part of the requirements of the grant is what is the city doing to encourage this pro- this project financially, and this is, uh, one way that we're, we can do that with, by waiving the fees, which are, which are considerable, but it's a way to help us get more housing for those who need it. And if the contingency in here is, is if we don't get the grant, then the housing authority can come back in and ask, as they do each project, they would be referred again to the, uh, committee to be in the council for approval, so with that, I move the council adopt the Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council approve the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Mr. Prince.
Um, real quick, go back to the consent agenda, um, it looks like we removed the wrong item, it was supposed to be item B.
Oh, it is item B, you're right. So, uh, Mr. Corman, what, uh-
We've approved it, so I think we're okay. I see.
How do we correct the, uh, we've got a motion to approve item C. That's been approved.
Yeah, I'm thinking since we've, you've, the council's approved the items, I think what, if it's okay with the council, we will just correct the minutes to reflect that it was item B, the intent was to, well, I'll ask the council. Intent was to remove item B? Yes, correct. Okay, and if the council's okay with that, and you all, you all, you voted for it, so I think, let me just correct the minutes, correct?
That should be sufficient.
Okay?
Okay. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution and we have one ordinance for second and final reading.
And the resolution is regarding the South King County Training Consortium Associate Agreement, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Kent Fire Department Regional Fire Authority entitled South King County Training Consortium Interlocal Agreement Associate Agency Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The ordinance for second and final reading is, uh, amending a definition for affordable housing. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41210 waive fees of Chapter One Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of the City Code by amending the definition of affordable housing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Um, a quick explanation, uh, which I probably should have given last week, um, and then gonna make a motion, um, this, um, this item, what it does is it, um, it changes the definition of affordable housing when a property is applying for federal low-income tax credits. It doesn't change our definition of affordable housing at any other time, and that, that revised definition isn't significantly different, it's slightly different based on, uh, on the way household incomes are calculated, um, but the purpose of, of making this ordinance change is so that we line up with the federal rules so that these properties, um, can get this extra funding source, so many of these properties we're talking about are public-private partnerships, and every bit of money makes the project a better project, so this helps, that's what this is about, and with that, I would, um, move final adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Palmer, the, this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ayes have it, thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple items for new business. Uh, next Monday, the 2nd, the after the Super Bowl, um, the committee whole has three items on the agenda, um, in the council chambers, the Airport Master Plan Update, Airport, Airport Sustainability Plan Update, and Regional Issues. And also, next Thursday and Friday, February 5th and 6th, um, at 8:30 AM both days, we'll have the council retreat at Maplewood, uh, at Maplewood Greens. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the meeting, uh, for the Public Safety Committee on February 2nd will now be canceled.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do not have any committee business to report, but I would like to share a couple of events that I attended over the, uh, week celebrating the, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Uh, I attended an event on the Friday, the 16th, that was, uh, given by the King County Bar Association, uh, in celebration of Dr. King's birthday, and it was a, um, very nice event, well-attended, over 700, uh, judges, attorneys, and people, uh, from the judicial body, um, our keynote speaker was Janay Nelson, who was the Associate Director, Counsel of the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund, very nice and inspirational event. The following Monday, uh, I found myself in Tacoma at the, um, MLK Unity Breakfast, and, uh, this event was also well-attended, and, uh, we had, uh, guest speakers such as US Congressman Derek Humer from the 6th District, uh, with some musical performances, a very touching, moving story about a young man who had some, uh, economical difficulties who, uh, within a very short period of time, found himself, uh, being, uh, in a position of being a Grammy Award winner and, um, with a major artist, and he performed that song for us that, that, that morning. Also, the keynote speaker was, uh, Frederico Winfield, Whitfield, CNN host, and anchor, and then, of course, uh, we had a closing, uh, remarks from US Senator Patty Murray, very inspirational, and I was happy to attend and celebrate that day, that morning, in honor of, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Corman?
And no new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Palmer?
Yes, uh, Transportation Committee is going to meet tomorrow morning, that's Tuesday, January 27th, at 10:00 AM in the council conference room. Two items on the agenda, uh, the first one is 2015-16 ORCA Business Passport Contract, and the second is emerging issues in transportation. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple things, uh, first, the Finance Committee will meet next Monday, February 2nd, hard to believe that, at 5:30 PM, uh, two topics, uh, vouchers, emerging issues in revenue streams, and if I didn't mention it, it's in the council conference room. And then, secondly, last Friday, I attended, uh, my monthly meeting of the Forensic Investigation Council, uh, which is kind of a fancy title, but very, very interesting topics come up, and they talked about some legislative issues that are gonna come up that I've talked with, uh, Mr. Pavoni about, that I'd like to refer to the Public, uh, Safety Committee for a briefing, and they are, so I'll move that we move, uh, have a, for briefing only, uh, in public safety, uh, the, uh, procedure for the sexual assault kits, uh, and the, actually the impact it's gonna have on the state crime lab, uh, the several, there's a whole bunch of different marijuana laws that are being introduced, so if we could get a briefing on that. And then, uh, thirdly, DA, ding, DNA testing, and there's two bills in the legislature on that that could have effect on us.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that there be a briefing on the Public Safety Committee, pardon me, um, on the process for sexual assault, um, kits, marijuana laws, and the DNA testing?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Person, if you have any specific detail that you would like, it will help us to get the right-
I'll, I'll give it to you.
That'd be great. Okay, moving on, let's see, did I get everybody? I think so. Moving on to audience comment, was anybody that wanted to address the council? Okay.
Who will adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Uh, prior to adjourning, um, there was one other thing- Uh, prior to adjourning, um, there was one other thing, too, that I, uh, thought I would like to, uh, have referred it to the administration. And I know that, uh, back in, uh, two thousand and eight, when I joined the council, that we were facing budget cuts, and there were a number of things that we had taken out of the budget, and some of those things had to do with various celebrations that, uh, we were doing during the time. Uh, I would like to, uh, refer to administration that we look into, uh, reinstituting, uh, the celebration here in the City of Renton, uh, in honor of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's birthday.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the administration take a look at reinstituting a celebration to celebrate Martin Luther King Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, if we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.